We'll call this meeting to order. All selectmen of present, we'll start with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 50, 50A, 50B, 50C, 51, and 51A.
The warrant is read by the chairman. Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous. We have no meeting minutes to approve, so we'll go right to our seven o'clock appointment with Joe Marie F. O'Mahony, President, and Michelle Bryan, Vice President of Women of Wilmington, to request to conduct a 2012 run in Wilmington, run for Wilmington Walk for Kim Forte, May 6, 2012, an update on the activities and programs.
Good evening.
Good evening, ladies.
I apologize for my appearance. I came from karate, so I would, I know I'm on TV, and I apologize. I did, and I also apologize to the town manager because I told him that I would bring, hand out this evening and email it to him in advance so you'd all have it, and I didn't, so. They have extra copies, hopefully, for the press as well, but we just wanted to give you a quick update on what we've been doing and then to ask for your approval for the dates for next year's road race. We had our first road race this year, and it was, I believe by all accounts, a resounding success. We never expected to have the turnout we had. We had over 600 walkers and runners there that day. The police were unbelievable in handling such a large crowd. We are just so thankful to all the people that came and volunteered. And that being said, we think we have found our spring fundraiser. We're trying to be, you know, we're a community service group, and we don't want to become a fundraising group. So, in an ideal world, we're going to only have two fundraisers a year, and we think we found our spring fundraiser. So, that being said, we wanted to ask the selectmen's approval tonight, and having next year's race on May 6, obviously with the same conditions that we'll work with the police and make sure that we have everything buttoned up to what would make the most sense at that time. But I also wanted to, before we get to that, I wanted to kind of give you an update on what WOW has been doing since our inception last year. We did last week receive our 501(c)(3) approval, so we are officially a tax-exempt charitable organization at this point, which we're excited about. We have still, the clothing pantry has been unbelievable in the amount of donations we've gotten. We've actually had to close the July and August collection dates because we've taken over the entire attic at Villanova Hall, and we can't fit any more items into the attic until we thin them out. We've been able to service 11 families in Wilmington so far with the items from the clothing pantry. We are looking at other ways to get them back out into the community, either through Lowell Wish, Mission of Dees, we're right now going through in itemizing kind of what we have and what we can do with it to keep it out there and not just in storage indefinitely. So, we appreciate St. Thomas letting us take over their attic, even though I don't think that was the intent initially. We will have a September drive. By September, our goal is to have everything organized and cleared out so that we can continue to have drives in the fall. We would like to couple it in the fall with, originally the idea had been to have a monthly drive that would be for clothing, household items, food pantry donations, box tops, and things of that nature. So, we really want to have, we're going to call it kind of a community drive once a month, where people can bring clothing pantry items, food pantry donations, box tops for education that will disperse equally to all the public schools in town. We have a carrying cans idea that we're going to work with the town manager on where recyclable cans can be dropped off, and we'll have our volunteers redeem them and use that money for our endeavors. So, we'll be looking to put receptacles outside at different locations throughout town. And once we have that more formulated, we'll submit information to the town manager, and if we have to come back, we will. We were able to give two scholarships to high school graduates this past June, and we're definitely going to make that an annual thing and hopefully bulk it out more for next year. As you're aware, we, Tom Pizera had brought to your attention or asked for your permission to refurbish one of the benches at the Common in honor of Kim Forte, and we have secured that. We actually had someone volunteer to do all of the work in refinishing it so that we don't need to replace it. So, we're hoping that will be done by this Wednesday's walk so that Tom can unveil it. With the weather being what it was, we, he unfortunately couldn't do the amount of work that he wanted to outside, so that's still a date to be determined, but we're hoping it will be, if not by Wednesday, certainly sometime in the next week or two, that that will be done. We have the sponsored child program. If you go to our website, that was the bulk of the money from the road race. What we wanted to use it for is for children in town who couldn't pay for an activity, a camp, a field trip, anything basically that a child's always wanted to do or needs and can't afford, their family can't afford. We now have an application online that they can apply for those funds through the Women of Wilmington to sponsor them to do that. And we've also started working with local businesses to get discounts, like things like karate. The Academy of Traditional Karate has already offered their services and giving us discounted rates so that we can get kids in to do that. Jim Street has offered to do discounted birthday parties for kids who might have never had a real birthday party, that we could do that. So, that's available on our website, womenofwilmington.org, as well as the clothing pantry referral form for any families who are in need of anything. We have, I don't know if I said this already, we have over 250 members right now. We've delivered at this point, well over 100 meals. We currently have two mail plans going.
Yes.
And we are, we just, we just did a gift card drive for the Murphy family, and we've done drives similar to that for other families in need that are in crisis. And we're, the food pantry, that was the other thing that we're coupling with. One of the great things that I've come to discover about our group is that we're really starting to become a collaboration with other organizations in town, that, you know, if someone comes to us looking for fuel assistance, we now have a relationship with a community fund that we can refer them over, and it seems to be working really well to kind of have a crossover. And with the food pantry, we've had our board members starting to go to volunteer, to learn the process, and see where we can help. We're going to be having an annual cleaning there at the end of August, where WOW members are going to clean it from top to bottom. We're going to reline the shelving. Right now, it has some kind of old particle board shelving, and we're going to get some real wood in and take care of, get some volunteers to do that. And then we're going to have a restocking party to get people in to restock the shelves. And we are currently doing a member of food drive through the Fourth of July, where my challenge was, since we just received our tax exempt status, to get 501 items to donate to the food pantry by the Fourth of July. And right now, we just broke the 100 mark, and this is day four. So, I am, I'm confident that we're going to, going to be able to do that. So, that being said, I don't know if Michelle Bryan's our Vice President and also the Race Director, I don't know if there's anything she wanted to add before we just ask for your approval for May 6, 2012. If you have any questions, I know I just spent two minutes not even breathing, so there's a lot of information thrown at you.
Is that all you've been doing?
That's it.
That's great. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just think it's outstanding what you're doing, and I'm sure everyone's going to agree. Just, we appreciate what you're doing, and a lot of folks appreciate what you're doing. And it's a worthwhile organization, and you're doing a lot of good in the town. It's what it really is all about, and volunteerism at its best, once again. The town does it again. Folks like you, Amy.
All of us. It's unbelievable.
I think it's been said, I'm glad that you have the checklist for all the things you covered, so if anything didn't stick, it's certainly here, and just echo what's been said. Great job. It's, you know, indicative of the kind of people that we have in town, and it's great that you found this niche. It's, with all the voids that you seem to be filling, in hindsight, it's kind of hard to believe that they weren't filled already with the volunteerism that, you know, has thrived in this town for a lot of years, so, great job.
I echo the sentiments. I've attended some of the events. I obviously can't go to them all, but I just, I think what I, you know, aside from the giving to the families that are certainly in need, what I enjoy is seeing how passionate and enthusiastic and about happy, how happy people are getting involved. So, certainly continue to do what you're doing. Sleep in the meantime, and spend time with your family if you can. But certainly, it's very impressive, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll compliment, or I'll compliment the words of my colleagues. What I, above and beyond the individual bullets of the things that you've been engaged in, which all by themselves are remarkable and impressive and worthy of our thanks, I want to thank you for the visible volunteerism that you're, that you're engaged in. What I mean by that is, I think that the kinds of efforts that you participate in certainly are great benefit to the recipients, the people that you're helping out, but even more so, not more so, but certainly equal, you're, you're serving as an example to the youth of our community, to not, and not just the youth, just to all people within the community to see what, how important it is for all of us to take care of our neighbor in these times of decreasing resources. There's less money, government has less to give out, and there's more people that need help, and we all have to be looking for ways to help each other and look, look after our neighbors, and you're an example of that. And I hope that that becomes viral and infectious and other, other folks take advantage of it. So, thank you for living as an example for that.
Okay, I think probably a little early to see if there's conflict on the date, so entertain a motion for the proposed date on Sunday, May 6, 2012. So moved.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you.
And like I said, we'll, we'll meet with you in the fall to firm up times and things like that. We know that this past year, we had to work with the police department on that, so we'll be back. We're not going too far away, so you've been full blown. Warrant, have a nice summer, and we'll be back to bother you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Communications.
Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of a letter that was sent from Dennis Disoglio, the Executive Director of the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and Beverly Woods, Executive Director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, relative to the I-93 Lowell Junction Interchange. And essentially, this was a letter sent to Secretary Bilecki and Secretary Mullen, the Secretaries of Housing and Economic Development and the Department of Transportation, respectively, indicating that they wanted to see the process, the planning process for the I-93 Lowell Junction Interchange continue, but specifically concentrating on the issue of funding. And so, there has been a, I guess I would call it a somewhat of a slowdown with regard to this. Initially, there was funding that was supposed to be coming through the, these two RPAs, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission and MCOC, which is the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. And the initial stage of that funding, based upon what they have on their tip, the Transportation Improvement Program, really wouldn't get going until 2023. And they have commitments that carry them out for another 10 or 12 years beyond that. So, what they did was they tried to identify options in this letter which would engender the possibility of funding. And they suggested that there be made available federal grants for transportation, or a state bond authorization, or funding set aside through the Science Bond Bill. And they also discussed a little bit about a design-built finance program which was used on Route 3. But essentially, that's what this is. They're asking for the Commonwealth to, I guess, restate their intentions and talk about a state financing plan which currently places responsibility for a $180 million project on the regions, and in fact, the regions have not been able to identify that money. You know that initially, there had been discussion about the parties involved way back when Mills Corporation was involved, were being involved with a bulk of the startup funding for the intersection and the transportation improvement projects. Since that time, the state wanted to bring, wanted to expand the intersection project such that it would go all the way to the New Hampshire line with the, the 93 roadway. So, that also has increased the anticipated cost. But regardless of that, right now, major infrastructure funding for both of these regions through the year 2035 currently totals $131 million, and that amount of money does not include any coverage for the cost of this project. So, again, they're going back to the state, as they have in the past, to ask them to help identify the funding source. And that's pretty much where we are at this, at this point, and that's why you have not seen very much activity on this, on this project. They have been in touch with Congresswoman Songus, and she has probably been the most vocal proponent in Congress for this particular project. She has suggested that federal grants should be pursued, and we will certainly pursue that with her, but this letter also asks the state to, to get involved and to really restate its intentions, whatever they may be. So, that's why, that's the purpose of, of this letter that was sent out by the two MPA Executive Directors. If there are questions, I'll go to the next one.
I'd like to at least talk to it, if not a question. How does, I guess, we had some conversation, I think it was last fall, when Secretary LaHood from the Obama Administration came, and with much fanfare among the, the Trittown Task Force, as well as our legislators representing us. I heard words that made me feel like, at least at a federal level, kind of coming from where the buck stops, that there would be support for this project, and I inferred from that 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 meant financial support. And I don't know if maybe I misunderstood. Did you hear otherwise, or did I miss? I don't know. It seems like we've gone in a different direction here, and the events of that morning are not being taken into account, or they were not events at all.
Well, certainly, what I, what I heard was that they would support the composition of the project. You know, that was the, the big issue at the time in terms of Tewksbury's concerns, et cetera, and that they would support that. I think it would be reasonable to assume by inference that they meant, that that meant there would also be federal dollars for the project. I don't know that that was specifically stated, but I could certainly understand why one would take an inference of that. But at this point, nothing has been identified, to my knowledge, and EPA, for example, is not moving forward right now with any environmental analysis. So, that being said, the fact that there are no interagency meetings going on, and the Department of Transportation really can't go forward at this point without EPA's environmental analysis, it, the funding sources just need, need to be identified, otherwise we're at a standstill.
Yeah, I mean, as, as your representative to the Trittown Task Force, I will tell you that we, as a, as a task force, haven't met in any formal fashion at all since last fall. And I was kind of anxious when I saw this memo come across. I thought, okay, well, maybe things are kicking back into gear again, and that, that's a good thing. And I guess frankly, I was a little disappointed to see in writing that things are going to continue, at least for the time being, to be stalled. So, I don't know if it makes sense, or I imagine we're communicating with our, your colleagues and the planning colleagues at the various, at the other towns to make our position clear and present to our elected legislators at the state level and even at the federal level?
Yeah.
I know you mentioned Congresswoman Songus, but what about the other Congress representatives? I guess Congressman Tierney would have some influence, would he not?
I would think so. I think the next step really is, we're trying to get a response from Secretary Bilecki and Secretary Mullen. I think that's important, and so they're, they're following up on the, on the letter. There was a meeting today in Secretary Bilecki's office that Carol Hamilton attended along with the representative, the planning representative from both Andover and Tewksbury as well. So, we're trying to, you know, not force a response, but garner a response. And at the same time, I believe Congressman Songus's office is going to try to put something together that I hope would include people such as yourself, and, you know, Mike Sorrentino, and Carol, and I, and then the four representatives from the other towns as well. So, probably we should see if we can get that moving, and if so, decide what the next steps are.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The board has a copy of a memorandum from Julian Sousa, who is a town manager in Framingham, who was instructed by his board of selectmen to notify Massachusetts communities that during a special town meeting session that they conducted during Framingham's recent annual town meeting, the town meeting members in Framingham voted to request that their federal and state representatives and senators file legislation that will eliminate all unfunded state and federal mandates. Included with the action was, as I indicated, that town manager Sousa notify all of the different cities and towns. And he has transmitted this memorandum asking for support, and he's provided a copy of that particular article. So, you know, it's sort of wish upon a star. Tinkerbell is out there somewhere, I guess, going to spread some fairy dust, but I didn't know if the board wanted to take any action at this point.
Is there a way to potentially get a list of what those specifically would be that would pertain to Wilmington at some point in the future?
I don't know. It's probably kind of an exhaustive list. I mean, you know, it's anything from, you know, all of the special education mandates to housing issues. It's just, it's just a mess.
Okay.
Yeah. There may be, there may be a listing that the auditor has, because technically, there's been legislation that had been filed before that says that, that the auditor can take some action on unfunded mandates, but I don't think anybody's ever really paid a whole lot of attention to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just want to keep our eye on what's going on in Framingham. I don't think we should take action necessarily. That's my personal opinion, but I'm anxious to see how this all goes. I suspect it'll get swept under a state government rug somewhere, but I'm interested to see what response this would garner. So, if you hear of anything, a quick email or notification would be interesting to hear.
We can, we can contact them and ask them if they've, if anybody has filed legislation, because I think that's what the Framingham should have done, is that they should have filed legislation, you know, similar to the way we do things.
Right.
But I can, they certainly check, check on it.
Good luck to them, the Red Sox.
Could you elaborate on any of the examples of the state and federal unfunded mandates?
I think he just kind of went over that, saying that the list is pretty broad, special needs, education, some housing. We have a letter from Carl Nold of Historic New England, provided a copy to you. He's the CEO, the president's CEO, and this is regarding the Winifred Richardson Estate on 280 Woburn Street. He wrote to me, and he actually met with Jeff Holland and I on Monday, June 20. He followed that up with this letter indicating that Historic New England was essentially pleased to have the opportunity to be involved in this particular property, and they've indicated that they'd be happy to work closely with the Town of Wilmington and its Historical Commission in monitoring the preservation restrictions that both the town and Historic New England hold to protect the land and the character defining historic features of the structures on the property. In recognition that in 2005, the town willingly assumed certain ongoing responsibilities for the oversight of the property through that preservation restriction, and also in recognition of Ms. Richardson's desire that the town carry out these responsibilities, Historic New England is presenting a voluntary contribution to the town of $25,000 that is restricted on certain terms that would help support the management of the easement over time and any care of any historical collection items from the house that the town might accept from that property. I can tell you that it's very restricted, the principal and appreciation, it's a principal and appreciation restricted endowment. It's their intention in establishing the fund that both the principal and appreciation be restricted in perpetuity, and that the appreciation is to be added to the, to the principal. So, essentially, they're not looking for the principal to be, to be spent, and they want anything to be spent specifically on the management of the preservation restriction. So, it's, it's, it's rather constraining, but nonetheless, it is $25,000 that has been sent to the town. Just, just briefly, I can tell you that based upon our meeting, their plan is to sell the property to a family who's interested in historic preservation and that is prepared to work with property restrictions. There is a for sale sign on the property. We met last Monday. They indicated to me that on Tuesday that they would be formally listing the property, and it is, been placed on the market, from what I understand, at a price of $462,500. We asked them whether or not they considered leasing the property, and they really indicated that their experience is that property ownership is preferred. They indicated to us that they have historic easements on 80 homes, in addition to maintaining 36 house museums. So, they, they do have a great deal of expertise and experience in monitoring historic easements, and they also have what he referred to as a multimillion dollar legal defense fund, which can be accessed if an owner of the property, whoever that may be, fails to meet the terms of the, of the easements. As part of the sale, they also acquired all of the contents of the home, and they will be inventorying the, the property within the home to determine what they will take from it. They may take certain items for their own private museum and collection, which they have. They have also indicated that they would be in contact with the Historical Committee, Commission, to determine whether or not there is any, anything in the home that has value to the Town of Wilmington. In other words, it doesn't have any Wilmington historical significance. So, that'll be the next step. Beyond that, it's not their intention to do anything else with the property. They've indicated that, that they would want to give the other property away, the two charitable groups, and asked me if I could identify any in the Town of Wilmington. And I did identify the Community Fund, and also the, curious enough, the Woman of Wilmington in suggesting that if there are things that are still in decent shape, you know, whether it's anything from furniture to bed linens, or, you know, something that may still be useful, that these are the groups that can make a determination as to where it could best be, best be donated. So, that's where we are at, at this point, and we'll continue to work with Historic New England. I think the good news is that, you know, we're still going to have this property. I think it was Selectman Newhouse that mentioned this at one of the meetings, and we're still going to have the benefits of having a historical property in the town. It's going to be managed, and we also spoke to them about what we believe is our right to access the property at least twice a year, and we're going to be working that out as well, so that'll all be a part of the easement. So, we won't have the responsibility of, of maintaining or paying for it, but we will get the benefit of having it in Wilmington in the, in the same manner that we really wanted to, to have it in when we got involved in this several years ago.
Do you know if the easements would involve any type of community visits, or, you know, I don't, I don't even know exactly what I'm referring to, but almost like museum-style type of walkthroughs? This is the type of living?
What I, what we believe that the easement would allow for is at least two visits per year where the family would be required to open up the property. And it would be a very controlled kind of visit, but if people were interested in, in seeing what that property was like, they, they would do that.
And also, when I toured the building, I took note of the, I guess, the barn or the outer house, or whatever they call that, and it was impressive to see, but in some regard, in disrepair, and maybe even dangerous to a little bit of a degree. So, the prospective new owner would most likely want, I imagine, to improve the construction and do some repair there, and I, I'm not asking and do some repair there, and I'm not asking you necessarily as an expert in historical preservation, but does Historic New England dictate to what degree and how they can construct or do repairs to that kind of a building?
It'll be de-restricted to that, to that extent. I mean, they'll obviously be able to mordenize some of the features of the building, the kitchen and the bathrooms, but they will still have to maintain the historical integrity. I believe that they've already spent money, Historic New England, on a, on a new, on a new roof, or at least a portion of the roof, and the septic system is in failure. So they have a price for that, that is, they're talking about $50,000, in which Historic New England will use the proceeds from, from what they've received from the, the Richardson Trust, as well as, I suspect, from any, any sale to, to take care of that system. So they are doing some of that work now, and then it will be de-restricted to, again, maintain the historical integrity of the, of the property. They indicate there is a niche out there for those folks who are interested in these, in these properties, and I suspect that there may be. It seems that, it seems with those restrictions and $462,500, it must be a pretty interesting group that are willing to do that. I'm pleased to formally tell the Board of Swetman what we've already obviously advised you of, and that is that the Town of Wilmington is once again among the 10 winning communities nationwide, and Liberty Mutual's Bring Back the Fourth contest. You know, of course, from your own participation, that from May 4th through June 14th, Liberty Mutual hosted an online contest which allowed communities across America to compete for a $10,000 Bring Back the Fourth grant. And on June 22nd, I received a telephone call from Liberty Mutual advising me that Wilmington was a winner again in the medium-sized population category. Wilmington is the only Massachusetts community being recognized this year, the only one of 10. The others are from other states, and is one of only three communities in the country to have won the contest both in 2010 and 2011. There were two other repeat winners. However, we do stand apart, because this is the third $10,000 grant that Wilmington has received from a Liberty Mutual contest. You will recall, in November of 2010, Wilmington was named among the 10 communities to receive a $10,000 fire safety grant for its successful participation in Liberty Mutual's 2010 Be Fire Smart pledge program, and Wilmington is the only community in the country to have won all three contests. So I just want to publicly extend a thank you to all the Wilmington residents and employees and businesses, organizations, and others who participated in the online history, history quiz, because that certainly was of value to the Town of Wilmington. Last year, we used the $10,000 to help defray the cost to the town. As you know, the town expends up to around $40,000 a year in, during this event, and so this is of great help, and this will help again. And you will recall that we bought a thermal imaging camera with the $10,000 that we won on the fire safety grant. So this is another feather in the, in the hat of the residents and their volunteer spirit for the town. That's it. Well said. It's exciting. The board is being asked to consider the appointment of two fence viewers for a one-year term in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 49, Section 1. You will recall that, I believe it was two meetings ago, that Mr. Lindonfelder brought this up to our attention and asked if the town, in fact, had any fence viewers as appointed officials, and the board instructed me to be in contact with Town Council, who has determined that in accordance with the law, that the board should, in fact, appoint two fence viewers. There are some communities that, that do, and just as many, I think, that do not, but he said a strict reading of the, of the statute indicates that the selectmen of each town, in this case, should annually appoint two or more fence viewers to hold office for one year. And so I bring that to the board's attention. If they wish to take an action at this meeting, or schedule an action for a future meeting, that's up to them. If they're looking for recommendations as to who might be an appropriate fence viewer, I would be happy to offer that as well, either at this meeting or in the future.
Judge, interested in the job?
I don't think he would really be appropriate, to be honest. Except for my own personal issue, I would be interested in the job, but.
Any questions, comments, or motions?
Well, before offering a motion, I would say that it makes sense to, to consider the building inspector or the, somebody from the engineering office. Makes sense to me that if everybody's comfortable with a particular official or position, we could make that appointment, at least have one, and then, you know, then move on to having a second. So you had mentioned you had a, you could give a recommendation. Is either or both of those positions something you've thought about, or?
Yeah, I, I think that in terms of an initial appointment, I think the building inspector is the person that you find in most communities, and I've discussed it with Mr. Spalding in the event that the selectman wanted to move in that direction. There's no restriction as to who that person should be, or where they should live, or whether they can or can't be a, an employee, and so it probably makes sense, I think, in this case, to appoint Mr. Spalding. I think someone from the engineering department certainly would be appropriate. We also have an alternate building inspector who's available, fellow by Peter McGee, who we could consider as well. I've only talked specifically with Mr. Spalding to ascertain his interest, or to suggest that he should be interested.
Yeah, okay. On that basis, I'd move to appoint Al Spalding, Wilmington Building Inspector, to, excuse me, the position of a fence viewer for a term of one year.
I'd second it. I agree with Mr. Newhouse that initially that the building inspector would be the appropriate individual, I would assume, where he's the zoning officer. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Can we discuss before we vote? I have a question. What is a fence viewer? It's, I mean, it's fine that we're gonna, I, I'm not opposed to Mr. Spalding. I think he's, everything you said is right. But what are we, what are we voting for? What is he gonna do? Because I want to make sure that we're not giving the impression here that we're identifying Mr. Spalding, or whomever we vote to be the fence viewer, that this person is going to be the judge of what is a good fence or a bad fence. And if they are, then where is it denoted? What kind of criteria do, are we giving to Mr. Spalding in this particular case if we do vote for him? What are the charges that we're asking him to, to live by?
You know, my, my take on that is that, and I've read the, you know, chapter and verse of every section in here. If, if it were up, if it were up to me personally, I think that, you know, this, this law is, is arcane and, you know, incredibly, you know, it, it turns, it turns a town official into a referee at times between neighbors. And for that purpose, I'm not crazy about it, but the fact of the matter is, it's on the books, you know, it exists. So I guess in response to your question, I would say, you know, not having, the town not having dealt with this chapter in the law in a practical sense, going back probably forever, as far as, as far as I know, that I would suggest any time that, especially at the beginning, he's confronted with requests to exercise authority as a fence viewer, I'd be in touch with Council's office immediately to understand specifically what's his obligations in this instance, you know, how does he satisfy that obligation? So, I mean, to me, it's, it's, you know, it's in large part a referee on questions about fences.
I've read a couple of excerpts and I've seen things, and for me, you know, it defines what a fence is, and it goes through, and I won't read it, people can find it if they care to, but fence is four feet high and good repair, constructed of rails, timbers, board, blah, 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 blah. So it doesn't dictate what the materials are, it doesn't dictate what the color can be, it doesn't say. So that was one of the things I'm thinking, you know, if you build a reasonably safe fence, and you want to paint it purple with polka dots, there's nothing in here that I could see that says that that is in any way against the rules, and I don't think, at least from my reading of this, and I could not be, maybe I'm not reading it right, but I don't see the fence viewer as having authority over that kind of a judgment. But there is a code or a paragraph here that talks about spite fences and defines it, or how they're deemed to be private nuisance. So now, now you're starting to get into fuzzy definitions of what is a private nuisance, what is it, was it, it is, what isn't a private nuisance? And, but it alludes to the, I'm trying to find the paragraph where it talks about the individuals would seek legal counsel. So, you know, the remedy is effectively hire a lawyer and, and, you know, go through the legal process, you know, it's a civil discussion that needs to happen, and it's, to me, that sort of identifies, the fence viewer's job isn't to say, you're not allowed to have a purple fence, but rather to say, if this is a problem between you two, you need to settle it with, with legal counsel. I'm anxious to have a more appropriate definition, because I think we're probably, as a community, going to have to deal with now, what does this fence viewer that we're about to elect, what's his job, and where does it end? So I hope Council is prepared to answer the questions that I think that we're gonna have to put across.
Yeah, and another way of responding to that is, I think that you're going to find the application of the law. I, I'm not sure what kind of case law precedent there is for any given section in here, but I think that you'll find that application of law is going to be driven in large part on a case-by-case basis, and fence viewer doing their job the best that they can interpret from the statute. I mean, for example, Section 14, that, you know, if the division line between lands of respect and occupants is in dispute or unknown, fence viewer may designate a line on which the fence shall be built, and may employ a surveyor therefor. I mean, that just, it, that is certainly not the conventional role of a building inspector or any other town official, but if that's statutorily mandated, then so be it, I guess. I guess that's an unfunded mandate.
Put it on the list.
Put it on the list.
Yeah.
It's probably not on any list you're gonna find.
No.
So I, I mean, I guess, you know, we'll, we'll deal with it as it comes. It's a legitimate request to make an appointment. We make it. It's the most sensible selection, and then as that person is called upon to exercise that jurisdiction, certainly Town Council's office is available to advise on a case-by-case.
I'm not trying to make busywork out of this. I mean, the fact is, we have to act on this by virtue of the statute. I thought it merited having this conversation, and I, I'm glad we had it. I'm not sure we resolved anything, but it's important, I think, for us to hash it out, and I'm, I'm sure we'll have more opportunity to, to see how it all flushes out.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If we have a motion on the board, on the floor, in second, and all in favor?
Board is being asked to consider approving Town Council contract for fiscal year 2012. It is the same, same terms as it was the prior year, Mr. Chairman, and it has been agreed to and signed by Mr. Foskett, so it would need to be executed by the board.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Move to approve the Town Council contract for FY 2012.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous?
We got a valid contract? Is it appropriate to ask that?
Yes, same as it was to last year. The total value between the, the town and the water and sewer department is $255,000. $226,000 or so is.
Three seconds, please.
Two fifty-five.
And what does that represent?
That is a total amount of fees paid to the, the fixed fee arrangement with Town Council. Pays for all legal costs due. There are no other legal costs associated with the representation of the town, except for filing fees, expenses, that kind of thing. It is broken down.
A budget line item?
Yes, the budget.
It seems to be lower than that.
Well, I'm trying to explain. The budget line item was $226,000 and some amount, and the balance is paid through the water department. The balance of 38, maybe, maybe it was $216,000. I'm adding, $216,000, and the balance of $38,000 is paid by the water department.
Would that be a conflict where it's not the same at Town Meeting? It's not a line item?
No, the appropriate, the Town, the Town Meeting can only, does not appropriate for the water department. So the water, the Water and Sewer Commission has used the same Town Council on a fixed fee basis. So the Town Meeting only has to pay a percentage of, or the, the Town appropriation only pays for a percentage of Town Council's services. That's why we only appropriate that amount of money, that $216,000. The balance is paid by the Water and Sewer Commission. This is how it's been going back to Alan Allman.
Yeah, I just wondered why the Town Meeting doesn't appropriate funding for the one in front of the board.
The Town Meeting is not authorized by special acts to, to fund the water department. All the water department funding must come through rates, water, water rates. So the Town Meeting does not fund the operation of the water department. It never has. It doesn't statutorily. It can't do that. It's set up separately.
Well, one of the concerns I have is that Town Meeting, from time to time, we see large amounts being transferred from our budget to the water department.
No, you don't. We cannot, we, we cannot transfer funds from the budget of the town into the water department. What you see on occasion is the authorization of a, of a borrowing for a water department, although you haven't seen that in many, many years, but that's what you might see, because that bond authorization would require a vote by Town Meeting.
Can we just have something related to drilling wells, the $228,000?
At the Town Meeting? Not that I recall.
This wasn't the past Town Meeting, but the prior one. I got up and I spoke that we could rent machinery or buy machinery to drill wells, and my concern was that the water feasibility study identified three locations where we could have got water, and it appeared to me, after talking to somebody that was involved in the feasibility study, that they were told by SCA consultants to abandon bedrock wells which could have produced water, and that's why I believe that that feasibility study was disingenuous and a farce and possibly corrupt.
Right. I think you may be referring to when we present the budget and talk about capital projects that may be funded, for example, you know, 20-odd years ago when I got here, there was never a mention of the water department budget in the Town Manager's presentation or in the, or in the budget document itself. We include all that, but we include it for information only, because the Town Meeting is not authorized to appropriate any funds. What the Town Meeting has done, from time to time, is if there is going to be a borrowing for some amount of money, whether it's $2 million, or $5 million, or $500,000, if it's gonna be done by a borrowing, then regardless of the source of the funding, it has to be approved at Town Meeting. But the, the Town appropriated budget does not include the money for, for the water department in terms of its, its payment for those, for those services. The, that's appropriated at Town Meeting. The, that's appropriated at town meeting.
I would like to suggest the board to take some action to change that act, so the town meeting has to start approving the water department, because I'm really not happy with the leadership down there. I don't even consider it.
Okay, we're not gonna make this a personal attack evening, Mr. Chairman. Okay.
The board is being asked to consider approving the sale of town-owned land that's located on Faneuil Drive, identified as Map 44 Parcels 166 and 167, as voted at the annual town meeting on April 30th. Article 33, you will recall, was adopted, which authorizes the board to sell those parcels of town-owned land in compliance with Chapter 30B of the Mass General Laws and also the applicable bylaws of the town. Accordingly, the town prepared and advertised a request for proposals for bids for the disposition of these parcels. The Board of Assessors established a minimum fair market value of $150,000 for the property. The town received one bid in the amount of $151,000, and as such, I recommend that the Board of Selectmen authorize the sale of this property, defined as Assessors' Map 44 Parcels 166 and 167, to the highest responsible bidder, P&amp;G Realty Trust, Robert G. Peterson and Charles E. Gendron, trustees at 314 Main Street in Wilmington. The proceeds from the sale of the town property would be deposited in the town's capital stabilization fund in accordance with the adoption of Article 23 of the 1991 Annual Town Meeting. So this would require approval and a vote of the board.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I think so, yes.
I'd move to, to approve the sale of the lot at Map 44 Parcels 166 and 167 as described by the town manager.
Seconded. Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Board is being asked to consider a request from Janet Ingram of Wilmington Orthodontics to use the town common on Saturday, September 10th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. for an appreciation celebration. I did try to reach Ms. Ingram last week and have not heard back. This is, just to discuss this with her, I'm not sure what the board's position on this is. We don't, we have not, in the past, to my knowledge, allowed the common to be used for a, for private purpose. Certainly, we've allowed other, we've allowed nonprofits to use the common for these kinds of activities. Specifically, I think St. Elizabeth's Chapel has used it, the various PACs from the school department have used it. But I don't know what the position is of the, of the board on this, and...
Yeah, I was gonna, that was kind of a question that myself, and the date's September 10th. If it's the pleasure of the board, maybe it's something we can have the town manager discuss the, the issues with it, or just take no act, or...
Yeah, I was just gonna suggestion, suggest that, you know, it's the ten-year anniversary, obviously, of nine eleven, so I don't know what else the town might have planned in that vicinity over the weekend. So, given the, the comments made by the manager and the fact that, that the date is what it is, and, and apparently, there's no time crunch here, it doesn't seem, I'd, I'd suggest we just table it and allow the manager to ferret that out a bit.
I will tell you that we are in the, in the beginning stages of trying to plan an event for Sunday, September 11th. Met with the Council Churches, who first approached me about, about an event, and since had discussion with, with the chairman also in his capacity as the Veterans Services Director, and brief discussion with the police chief and the fire chief. And so we'll come back with some kind of report on that, but I certainly think it's appropriate for the town to recognize that, that day in a, in a special way. I will reach out to the representatives of Wilmington Orthodontics again. If they don't respond to the telephone calls, I'll send them a, a letter. And perhaps there may be another venue for them if they wanted to rent space from the school department or something, but this is a little bit out of the ordinary.
Mr. Chairman, I would have to agree with the town manager. I know Janet very well, and I like her, and, but, been on the board a while, I don't know when's the last time someone from the private sector's asked to use town property for their company. You know, I, I can't recall, and I have to agree with you, Mike. I don't know if we're gonna be setting something up down the road for other companies to come to ask the town at the town common. You know, if you give one, how are you gonna deny the second one, and the third, and the fourth, and the fifth? Maybe there's some happy medium somewhere, but it's something we need to really take a look at before making any decision.
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. McCoy. I, I, they're a great organization, and I, I just think it sets a weird precedent, you know, going forward, what do we, how do we say no to the next folk? So I, I agree. I, I don't know if there's another, you know, I'm not sure why the common was, was identified, but, you know, is, is maybe Glen Road, or as you say, one of the other sport fields. September might be an awkward time for some of the, some of the sports fields, but even some of the other larger private entities in town that have field space available, perhaps, might be willing to, you know, knowing where Wilmington Orthodontics is, it's, basically, they've got a parking lot, so maybe they're looking for a grassy lot. So I'm, I'm certain that some of the other businesses in town might be receptive to, to helping them out.
Okay, we'll reach out soon. The board is being asked to consider the request of Stephanie Fitzgerald to have a neighborhood block party to be located from 25 Hanover Street to the corner of Belmont Avenue on Sunday, July 3rd, from 2:00 to 11:00 p.m. If the board is so inclined, we would put all the normal restrictions on this.
Okay, there's no recommendation from the police?
Uh, no, but we would be for, you know, any, if we granted them, it'd be subject to all of that.
Right, okay. Questions, comments, or a motion to that effect?
Would you go ahead and request?
I'd second it. Motion made second, all in favor? Unanimous?
That concludes the regular business before the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Public comments? Mr. McDonald, you can sit at your seat over there, you don't have to sit at the table.
Thank you.
I just said you can sit over there, you can sit over there, you don't have to sit over there.
These matters are serious enough, Chairman Semaglia, that after having watched the selectmen meetings, I noticed that a lot of times you can't hear the comments from the audience.
They do do a nice job, so go ahead and make your point, please, Ms. McDonald.
One of the issues on our agenda tonight was the I-93 Lowell Junction interchange, also known as the Tri-Town Project. And I believe this matter is serious enough to come before the board. On previous occasions, I've mentioned that the Rocco's dump site is probably one of the most contaminated sites in our country.
Mr. McDonald, that, that letter tonight, that we got tonight from them, was basically just, just reaching out to the, the organizations involved. We know where you're coming from with the Rocco's dump site, we understand all that.
Well, I don't understand the buffer zone, and you guys are concerned about the speed of the project. I'm concerned with my community that there's not enough being done to protect our well fields from that contamination.
There'll be plenty of time, plenty of meetings, Mr. McDonald, I'm sure for that, that...
No, this is a serious enough matter, I think you ought to give the town respect of selectmen.
I'm gonna give you all the respect you deserve, Mr. McDonald.
You keep interrupting me.
But just because it's a, well, it's a public meeting, does not necessarily, public has to speak. We're giving you the opportunity because you, you're, you're asking for it. But I'm not gonna sit up here for another hour and a half listening to you go over the same, saying things every time. So basically, with that...
I'm just concerned that, I'm just concerned that you're not protecting us, and you're gonna allow that contamination to get into, into our aquifer zone when this land here is a buffer zone. I'm actually kind of happy that they're, they're holding off on the funding.
Good.
Because I think it's irresponsible, from the board's position, not to protect us enough.
Has nothing to do with protecting our residents with a buffer zone, what happened here tonight. Do you have any other questions you'd like to bring up?
Yes. Concerning the high school feasibility study. We were promised that it was gonna be a fair study, it was gonna be an open study, and there are residents who have concerns that our existing school is a structurally sound building, and no information was given as to specific costs that it would take to fix some plumbing, electrical, and air conditioning needs. And I just don't think that this board and this manager has done right by the town. I think...
That's a personal opinion.
I think it was a disingenuous study, like the other feasibility studies.
Okay, very good.
The other concern I have is there was an appropriation requested at town meeting for $1,125,000 that went out with the town manager's letter stating that. At the feasibility study meeting, okay, I brought up to the town that I have copies of the contract, the feasibility study actually cost $200,000, and there was a design item for $450,000, $455,000, okay? We never authorized a schematic design of a high school, and I feel as though we're being overtaxed, and we're being lied to. And I don't think that this board is protecting the town.
Okay, that's your personal opinion, and you're done.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
Mr. Kyra, would you like to... We've, we've gone over this at many meetings.
We have, we have gone over it every time, this is the fourth, at least the fourth time you've mentioned this, because you've mentioned it three other public forums, and I think that you've mentioned it here before, and we, we gave you the response then, that that was in fact all-inclusive, that it included the feasibility study, includes the schematic design, that we have, you, you cite the contract that we have with Doran Whittier, we also have a contract with Jocelyn Lesser and Associates, which is included in that amount. The appropriation was $1,125,000, of which 48.47% is paid for by the state. I'm not sure what else I can tell you. You're obviously asked the same question after getting the same answer, both by myself, the members of the high school building committee, by representatives from Jocelyn Lesser, by Doran Whittier. I can tell you that this entire project is closely supervised and monitored by the MSBA. I had two meetings back-to-back today before the community development technical review team, and then a working group session. We're gonna be at the MSBA again next week, we're in contact, or next month, we're in contact with them constantly. Their, their oversight on this project and every project, for anybody that's been involved since they've changed over their system, is like a blanket. I mean, you, and, and so I can tell you that if you believe that we're doing something inappropriate, you can, you can take that up with whomever you want to take that up with, but the fact is, you disagree with the project. You ask whether there's a cost for plumbing and air conditioning and heating, as if that's going to take care of the needs of the high school, when the real issues of the high school are programmatic. The real issues of the high school are that it is not functional in today's society, and with 21st century learning needs and capacities. But because it was built in 1950 and has a strong outer core, it's your position that the building is okay. Well, the majority of the folks in town don't agree with that. In fact, the feasibility study, by a vote of 210 to one, determined that we should go forward to the next stage. Their overwhelming support for doing something other than what you want to do has been manifested at every one of these public forums, and also in the feedback that we've gotten. So, you know, sometimes you don't always get what you want.
All right, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much, thank you very much for the question.
They voted for a feasibility study that was fair and honest.
I know what the people, I know what the people voted for.
There are 210 people there, Mr. Kyra, we have 15,000 registered voters in Wilmington.
They'll have their opportunity.
Quite a few people at the meeting, the town workers and town employees.
They'll have their opportunity, Mr. McDonald, to vote whichever way they want when it comes time to vote, and we, we hope that that will be in early December of this year. And you can take your campaign to the streets and tell them not to vote for it, but it'll be their decision.
Prior to that, Mr. Kyra, prior to that, the people, whether they want a new school or a renovated school...
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald.
...deserve a feasibility study that includes the existing school, which you did not do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDonald. Any other public comments?
Yes, one other...
No, no, you're, you're all, you're all set, you're all set, Mr. McDonald. Any other public comments? Mr. McDonald, please, 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 no, no.
We're paying for WCTV, and we just need some answers.
You're done. Any other public comments?
I'd like to make a brief one, but I'm a little hesitant, because I don't want to get in the middle of this. I emphasized with Mr. McDonald a couple of points, but I don't really want to get into it in large part. I have, you know, or may know, some questions and concerns and issues with the environmental problems out there. I did attend a few of the feasibility study meetings toward the end of the process, and I was a little taken aback with a couple of comments I heard that I perceived, which I may have been incorrect, snickering from some of the members about the million-dollar ball field, and I, I don't know if that was the case, but I, I just wanna say so, I can understand some of the, you know, I don't know the details, I don't wanna get into it, but there are those of us out there that have some questions with the process.
Well, we've had a beautiful pro...
Yeah.
Many, well, yeah, let me just say that the process was very open. Plenty of meetings, plenty of opportunities, and a lot of people did avail themselves of going to those meetings. So I take, I take offense when you're saying the process was private, or whatever you're, you're insinuating, but I take offense to that. Plenty of opportunities.
No, that actually was true about the comments, about the snickering about the cost of the ball field, and, and most of my comments aren't related to the same kind of comments that Mr. McDonald has, but I, I, I was disappointed, not objective, but disappointed, that late in the process, that we determined where the 200-foot riverbank setback zone was, and then, so as, as the process went through, in my mind, as an environmental professional, I would like to have seen all those answers figured out prior to coming up with proposals, and we ended up getting up to, you know, Permeation 15 D or B or F, or whatever it was. And, and so when I talk about having a problem with the process, I don't have the same kind of problems with the process. Mine's more procedural and opinions, and I'm not trying to pick a fight, I'm not trying to insult anybody, but I did actually, as an environmental professional, was disappointed with some of what I did see, and I would like to leave it at that, really, so, thank you.
Yeah, just in terms of the process, and I'm, you know, I have a pretty thick skin when anybody is critical of me individually, the board in general, the town administration. I understand how this works, I've been around it long enough not to, to lose sleep over it when somebody's critical. But, you know, when we talk about the process, let's, let's not leave anybody with the wrong impression that, A, we haven't done exactly what's required of us under the law, step by painstaking step, and number two, this process is a fishbowl. I mean, we got a mandate from town meeting, when town meeting appropriated the money overwhelmingly, as recited by the manager. We get a mandate to go out and follow this process. The, the MSBA, you know, you never look a gift horse in the mouth, and, and at 50% plus or minus of serious dollars, you, you play by the rules that are, that are put down on you. That's just the way it is, you know? You don't, you aren't gonna look at anywhere from, you know, 30 to 40 million dollars and say, I don't like the way you play the game, so, so forget about it. You, you just, you just don't look that gift horse in the mouth. But the fact of the matter is that this process is incredibly public, it's incredibly burdensome and cumbersome in terms of the many, 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 many hours that a lot of people have to volunteer in order to move the process along each specific stage. You're talking from the finance committee meetings leading up to that town meeting, you're talking about that open town meeting where the appropriation was made, you're talking about the open appointments of the high school building committee meeting, which again, the lion's share of those people are volunteers. They go through a painstaking review process for RFPs, for not only the owners' project managers, but for the design team. And yes, the law dictates that the fee... And yes, the law dictates that the feasibility study will include these various stages and ultimately involve schematic design. With respect to alternatives that are put on the table, by law, the town has to consider a renovation and addition alternative, which the town has done and, and spoke to through this process. The High School Building Committee ultimately took a vote and recommended that we proceed with the MSBA with the hopes of getting funding for a new, a new high school because it made more sense financially. Now, we can rehash every conversation or discussion that's occurred along that very public process, but public comment is intended to be, "I'm having a problem, to whom should I refer my problem?" It, it is not supposed to be an opportunity to rehash every decision that town meeting has made, the administration has made, a, a building official or other town official has made, or that a committee that has spent hundreds of hours, hundreds of hours, just coming to a recommendation to the town that ultimately every registered voter in Wilmington is gonna get the opportunity to cast a vote at the ballot box and is gonna get the opportunity to cast a vote at a special town meeting for the appropriation. You can't get a more public process than the process that we've been through, notwithstanding the incredible inefficiencies and time commitment that that demands of a lot of volunteers. And I'm not talking about myself, I'm not talking about the design team and the owners' project manager who's in the business and the administrative people, I'm talking about the volunteers who've been through that process. So, while I, I don't assume that any comment that's been made here tonight is intended to be critical of any members of that committee, I have to stand up and say my piece and say, "Hey, wait a minute, what are you talking about? We've been going through this since a year ago May, or a year ago April." So, you know, if, if, and I happen to agree with Mr. Kyra on this one. Mr. McDonald, at every public forum that I've been to, and I've been to all of them, you've had the opportunity to speak at most of them more than once. You just, you just obviously disagree with the decision to construct a new high school.
No, I both have this in mind.
Well, maybe it's, let me, it's my turn, it's my turn, it's my turn, it's my turn.
It's about considering...
It's my turn.
The feasibility of a renovation which wasn't done.
We're done, Mr. McDonald, you're done, yeah, you're done tonight, Mr. McDonald. You're absolutely done.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
I, I happen to agree that if people are opposed to what's being done, are opposed to the result, then go out, go out and vote against it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to encourage that, I happen to support the initiative, but, you know, that's what it comes down to. Let's, let's not, let's not, you know, throw things around about the process that it's just simply untrue and if left unresponded to, people are gonna assume they could be true. And I hate to take the board's time on this, I, I think it's, a lot of it should go without saying, but I feel a responsibility to speak up.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The people that have a fair vote, Mr. Newhouse...
New business, Mr. McDonald!
They need to know what it kinda costs for a renovation. That wasn't done. Simple as that.
Mr. McDonald, we're, we're new business committee reports, we're done with public comments.
New business committee reports?
I just wonder why, I wish my colleagues and citizens out there a wonderful Fourth of July and happy safe Fourth of July. That's it.
Thank you. Did you go on over there?
The Crockmaw Farms, you want me to run with that? One of the, a couple of litigation matters that the chairman has asked me to continue to be involved in the working groups with and report back to the board is the Crockmaw Farms situation. A number of discussions have occurred between town administrative people, representatives of the board of health, and I just would recommend that the, that the chairman call for an executive session at some point this summer. I think based on schedules, I'm hearing that August might be an appropriate time based on council's availability and, and town officials who are involved in that, but I think conversations have been significant enough that it's time for the board to revisit that in executive session.
Thank you.
Just wanna re-echo what Selectman McCoy said about the Fourth of July. It's, we're gearing up for a wonderful week here in the town of Wilmington. Certainly, the accomplishments with the Liberty Mutual grant certainly helped sweeten the deal for all of us, so I would definitely say get out and enjoy. Had the, pleasure isn't the right word, but yes, it was nice to bond with the community for the Relay for Life. Certainly, it's a topic that can get personal for many of us, if not all of us. It was a very successful event and a lot of monies were raised for a very worthy cause as is many of the causes that come before this board. So, just wanted to compliment and congratulate the town of Wilmington on another successful philanthropic effort and certainly I look forward to the future business at hand in the, in the summer months ahead.
Thanks, Hury. Yeah, the Relay for Life, thanks for bringing it up. I, I was there for a little while, I didn't stay through the evening, but was impressed again with the attendance and with the demeanor and the solemnness of the event, but also the, the celebration environment that was there as well. So, kudos to all of you that were there, kudos to Wilmington for another successful event. I wanna appreciate you, Mr. Newhouse, for bringing up the definition of what public comments is about again. I know this evening we parted from that and I think we had to respond to, in the way that you and Mr. Kyra did, respond to the, the items that were being brought up. But I, I'm challenged and I would say a little bit frustrated that the public comments section of our meeting, and, and, Mr. Smaglia, I hope you know this, I'm not directing this at you as a criticism, in fact, on the contrary, to your credit, I believe that you go above and beyond the, the call of duty to try to give everyone an opportunity to speak their mind. That said, I think it's unfair, it's inappropriate for any individual to use the public comments and to use the fact that there's a television camera on and to use the press to bully their own message out into the public. There are means of doing so, but this is not the appropriate one and I'm frustrated that it has happened and I, I'm hopeful that we can put a stop to it immediately.
The last two forms...
That said, eleven score and fifteen years ago, our forefathers fought to give us the opportunity to be here and to represent each other. And it's government by the people for the people, and here we are, we're doing it. I think it's beautiful, I think it's wonderful, and I want all of us to have an amazingly fun celebration of our independence during the next few weeks, but do so in an, in an environment of dignity. Consider the sacrifices that our forefathers made to give us the opportunity to cook hot dogs and, and have fireworks. It's a great celebration, but we should, we should pause for a moment during the next two weeks and think about the sacrifices that were made. And happy independence.
Thank you. Before we go to on dates, I'd like to just respond to one of the comments that was made.
Yeah, I just wanna make it clear that the High School Building Committee must submit two, at, at least two different preferred options to the MSBA. And although they voted as their number one preferred option, a new build, they also submitted a renovation option which by MSBA regulations they had to do. So, any, any suggestion that that was not explored is not correct. In fact, we have to wait to see what the MSBA says. The MSBA may determine that the town has to do a renovation project. And given the fact that they have, you know, half of the checkbook, that, that would be something that the town, you know, would have to go forward on if that in fact was the, the end result. So, just for anybody who has the impression that we've not gone through that process, in fact, there were many iterations of both a new build and of the renovation and two of those submissions have been made, which has been made clear at a number of different sessions. Now, on June twenty-ninth, this has been mentioned, the Fourth of July festivities will kick off at the Town Common and they will go until July fourth. It concludes on July fourth with a breakfast sponsored by The Knights of Columbus. Would point out to folks that Family Day and Family Day fireworks this year is on Saturday, July second, and the spectacular fireworks begin at nine-thirty at the Town Common on July third. There's a special guest this year, Senator Scott Brown is intending to be present. And if anybody has any questions, they, if they wanna get the accurate information, they can go online, funonthefourth.com, or they can call nine-seven-eight-six-five-seven-eight-zero-eight-one for all of the information about all of the festivities, and they can certainly get a schedule by going online or visiting the Fourth of July building. The first concert on the Common takes place on July sixth. These are concerts that are sponsored by the Recreation Department. They will be every Wednesday from six-thirty to eight P.M. in July. The first concert is being performed by a group called Beetle Tracks. Would remind the board that they have been invited, as the public has as well, to help celebrate the opening of the farmer's market, which will be held really at the, at the parking lot by the Town Common on Middle Sixth Avenue from twelve-thirty P.M. to three-thirty P.M. and that will be conducted there throughout the summer on Sundays at that time. So, join them on that opening day while they'll have an opening celebration and then you can enjoy the healthy goods that are being offered. That same day, the Hundred and Tavern has an open house from two to four P.M. The next concert is on July thirteenth featuring Mark Shelton. And will remind folks that we do have a summer schedule for brush drop-off at Old Main Street and it does begin on July thirteenth from eight A.M. to two P.M. and on July sixteenth from nine A.M. to four P.M. For those of you who are interested, the next meeting of the High School Building Committee is scheduled for six-thirty at the Wilmington Town Hall. The Board of Selectmen meets in their summer schedule, so will not meet now until July eighteenth unless there's a reason to do so, otherwise.
Thank you. Motion adjourned.
Is there a date for the MSBA meeting?
I don't have an MSBA meeting date, I have a High School Building Committee meeting date. Is that what you wanted to know, the High School Building Committee meeting? That's July fourteenth at six-thirty.
Motion adjourned.
Me.
Seconded. All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.